Planning Board meeting, we have no hearings. First order of business at 7:30 is the draft cottage overlay district bylaw discussion. The intent here generally is to investigate new ways to add to our stock of housing, our stock of land use within the town, create a little bit of diversity. Other towns have put forth recently, in some cases quite a long time ago, overlays or just general bylaws to talk about allowing denser residential as an option. One of them that checks off a lot of boxes for towns is one that we thought was curious and worth a little bit of investigation was a cottage overlay, so to speak. So selecting a few parcels in town would be one way to do it and to draft some bylaws that would be subject to town meeting vote in the future, near future hopefully, gauge the town's sentiment towards proceeding in this way or not doing so. But it would effectively allow for another option for landowners in town of parcels of significant size to put together age-restricted housing that would be more dense than a typical phosphored or traditional subdivision, residential subdivision in town. So we adopted some language as nothing but a draft and really it's something that we want to kick around with folks in the audience. This language effectively, who supplied it? The developers in the room?
Yeah, there, it was a list of developers, an engineer, a land broker, and then just stakeholders, people, property owners that potentially be involved in the overlay district.
What we have here is nothing more than a draft and I, we as a board are very interested in seeing folks' reaction to it, getting some input, especially from developers who have done this before. I have plenty of experience in my professional career as a financer of developers who do this. But to try to get an idea as to what density might work from a developer's perspective in terms of making it profitable and something that would keep their curiosity to want to develop this type of housing. To really boil it down, it's a special permit process, not dissimilar from a traditional subdivision, but it would have a few qualifications. Number one would be an age qualification where occupancy to any of these dwellings would be generally limited to persons of an age of 55 or over. And then it would allow for an increased density where a traditional subdivision in town will have, or has always had, one dwelling per acre. We've proposed here for conversation's sake, a base density of 2X, so allowing a double density. That could be through attached units, detached units, or a combination. And then we layered on a second thought, and that thought was allowing for an affordable component. The idea here is to get diversity in housing so that seniors can have more affordable and more attractive to their needs type of an option in town. We see that there's over the past 10 years or so, quite a demand for this. But also to allow for an affordable component where we would say instead of two times density, we would allow for four times density. If, we threw out a number, pretty consistent with 40Bs rules, if at least 25% of the units were made affordable, and that definition of affordable could run the gamut, would probably attach it to HUD's definition. Not dissimilar from how the Commonwealth of Mass does it with their comprehensive permit through 40B. We would propose having the exterior design be consistent where the market rate units look like the affordable rate units. And one of the ideas here is to relieve a financial burden on the town where the bulk of what's being developed and has historically been developed in town has been larger homes that aren't going to be affordable by everybody, aren't going to be affordable by retired persons without substantial incomes, and cater towards children in the household who are obviously using the school system. To have a little bit of a balance with something that the board thought was worthwhile for entertaining. There's so many things that we can talk about, but I just generally want a sense from some of the developers and permiters and architects, professionals in the room, and landowners as to what they think might work, what they think within our draft makes sense, what doesn't make sense, a little constructive criticism, just kind of a very informal discussion session, I guess is what we're looking for.
David, before we get into it, does anyone need a copy? I had printed a couple of extra ones. I may not have a copy for everyone, but...
I think, I think one of the other reasons that we're looking at this is we've gotten a lot of comments from people about, you know, that as you get older and you want to downsize, and there's no housing stock in town, so you have to go elsewhere, you know, so we don't have that, you know, people can't downsize and stay in town with their friends and support network, they have to go elsewhere. So this is also looking at helping to address that issue that we've heard from people in town.
Add to what Dave said about the children in the schools, so when you just have single-family homes, even if you just have one kid, the math is already negative for the town budget wise. So if we could get some housing, whether it's this 55 or older, or, you know, or even on the other end get, I don't know if it would happen in town, but, you know, two-bedroom apartment type thing where people coming out of school or younger people who don't have kids could live in town. So just overall, the diversity of housing would help the financial bottom line to the town.
I think I'll start. My name is Mark Duggan, and I'm a resident of the town of Walton Woods Way. So almost 30 years ago, I was able to buy a house in the town of Bolton because of some creativity that the town put together at that point. You are familiar with Bolton Woods Way, you'll know that it was a LIP program that was sponsored by the state, and the town embraced it at the time. Citizens of the town came together and really helped move that process and that project along. Since then, that was the first 40B-type development in town. We've had others. I'm also an alumni of the planning board. It's been three years since my term ended, and I think in the third year of my tenure on the board, we started talking about this, and Doug and I and the other members at that point started talking to developers and bringing these ideas and initiatives to the table. And I'm glad to see that there's progress being made on this. I also want to mention that I'm trustee of the Affordable Housing Partnership in town, and, sorry, the Affordable Housing Trust, and I was on the Affordable Housing Partnership until it was disbanded because of the lack of development, I guess, going on in the town at that time. But overall, I believe it's a good thing. Switching tracks, I managed the property at 357 Main Street for Nancy and her family for seven or eight years since the, since the auction business moved to Marlboro, and we believe that it is a great thing to have flexibility in that property as well. I think more landowners in town should consider this in the future.
When you, thank you, Mark, when you talked about it on the planning board a few years ago, what was the sentiment? Were there, was it resistance, or were there negative thoughts?
We drew our inspiration from the master plan that the town put together more than 15 years ago now, I think, and there was a definite need identified back then, and we were not being, we weren't able to fill that need as a town with just the 40B initiative.
Okay. Other folks have thoughts? As you look at this density, does it make sense? Is it not enough?
Me? It's not bad. I just, maybe I should tell everybody who I am. I'm Jack Sargent. I used to be on the planning board many, many years ago. I'm on the Board of Appeals now. I'm also an engineer. I'm also a developer. I've built several over 55 communities. I've done 40B communities, I've done regular condominium communities, and a lot of single-family houses. I guess my first question was, is there a reason why you're restricting it to a senior housing only? Why wouldn't you do this as a general overlay?
We were thinking more like the kid factor?
Yeah, but you could restrict it with two-bedroom units, too, and pretty much get the same thing. My only, and the reason why I bring it up is...
Shrinks the audience?
Yeah, shrinks the audience. My only thing with the, my suspicion is knowing Bolton and the values of property in Bolton, that if you do this, you're going to develop over 55 housing that's going to be almost as expensive as buying a single-family home.
Right.
I don't think you're going to be able to bring in people at a lower income level other than if somebody does some affordable units. Is, you know, we did that, I did that in Hudson.
Sure.
Built condos in Hudson, not, it was over 55 community, but they sold in the $5,000, $6,000, $700,000 range because that's what people wanted, and that was in the town of Hudson. In Bolton, you're going to see the same thing. They're just going to be expensive, over 55 houses.
So you might accomplish a little bit of the affordable with the 25% piece, but the rest of it?
The rest of it, the rest of it, yeah, they're going to be expensive. You know, I don't know how they're making out on Sugar Road, but, I mean, those are not inexpensive houses either, and that's a 40B project. And I think, you know, something like this would be similar. The density, it's okay. I mean, you know, from a developer's perspective, the biggest thing that's always a stumbling block when you want to do one of these projects is just the timeframe of working it through all the permitting process, because every day costs money. And I have a suspicion that the first one going through probably won't be bad, but the second one is going to take a long time. Other than that, I think it's a great idea to get started with, but I, I guess I would like to see it other than just senior housing. I just got one rezoned in a parcel overlay district in Berlin for housing, and that is a senior project, too. And their bylaw is very similar to what you have here. A little bit more restrictive in terms of what they allow for buildings, how the buildings can be, you know, put together. Can't have, you're only allowed a certain percentage of three bedrooms. They require 30% of them to be moderate, I should take that back, 20% have to be moderate income, 10% has to be low income. It's a little bit different market in Berlin than what you're going to see in Bolton, but it's very similar to bylaw. But I don't know if you guys have seen it, but probably a good one to look at because it has a lot of same things in it.
So with, and that is, that is age restricted?
That is age restricted, yeah. And to be honest, the reason why we went for the overlay district, it actually, even though it's, it's a very concise bylaw, it really makes more sense than to do a 40B on the same parcel of land, which we could have done. And I think in the end, it'll end up giving Berlin a larger percentage of financial restrictions on, on moderate and low income than you would with a 40B.
Okay.
But it also allows us to do some other things with the project that under 40B we wouldn't be able to in terms of the size of the project and everything else, so...
So is there any way, like, where we could find out? So if we didn't do an age restriction, would say, because we were talking, I think in here we put a max of three bedrooms. Is that what we said?
Yeah.
But if we set a max of two bedrooms, so, so parents and one kid, worst-case kind of sort of situation, like, what does that look like?
Where you have a percentage of, you can only have no more than 10% of it be three bedrooms.
Yeah.
Where you have some, again, to create some diversity in the whole mix.
Okay, that's how Sunbury works, right? One, two is open, and three has a certain restriction.
Right.
Percentage restriction.
Yeah. Because it really doesn't take many kids to change the equation, you know?
No, but then the tax revenue from the density standpoint?
No.
Can cover the cost or is not?
In Berlin, was it an overlay as to certain parcels, or was it if this parcel's a certain size, it needs?
Yeah. So that's what I was wondering, were we talking about, do we pick certain ones, or do we just say all residential over 10 acres can be included in this, you know?
There's an example of it, it was in the Concord or Sunbury, I think.
What a lot of towns do is they have a minimum acreage, you know, 10 acres, 20, I think Hudson is 20 acres. Can't remember what Berlin was, to be honest. Spent eight years in the making of Berlin to get to this point, so...
Yeah, so you just say residential zone with any parcel?
Actually, most towns don't even quantify residential, it's just, it's an overlay district no matter where it works.
As long as it's over 10 acres or six. There was this much acreage that's usable or...
Yeah, that makes sense.
I don't want to volunteer, people, but I'm interested in your brain, what are your thoughts?
So, looking through it, I think it's, it's a great start in regards to the density and everything, you know, I think you're definitely going in the right direction. You know, looking at other age-restricted developments in town, you know, I think they're a good thing. But, you know, kind of what Jack's saying, when you look at the price point?
Yeah.
And you look at, you know, those communities in town, what they pay in taxes, you know, where they think they're, you know, getting into this affordable, you know, over 55 type development, and then they get their tax bill, you know, it's good and bad.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? For those folks, it's, it's a negative for the town. It's positive because you're diversifying that tax base.
Should that be part of, like, the developer's responsibility, too, though, to understand? You know, $400,000 would be a good point, but if I build all these units to be $500,000, $600,000, then it might be tough to sell, you know?
Yeah, you absolutely look at that, because at the end of the day, it's the cost for the person buying it. You know, so it just, it all lends to the total equation. So what is the land value, then? What are you trying to accomplish?
Sure.
And what can you build, and does it make sense? Or do you just end up then doing single families again?
Sure, sure.
That's, that's why the issue's involved, because the single families are at such a high market point, you've got to get a whole lot on the density on the other side to make it sense to build 400,000 old units.
And to his point before, if you're restricting yourself, I mean, Bolton still is out in 495. Where in Wellesley, you know there's a certain demand and everything like that, but if you're building 100 units of age-restricted, affordable, all that, it's like, how long is this going to take for me to lease up?
Sure.
Or sell out? It's going to be a long time. So, you know, having some flexibility certainly is helpful.
Absent the 55-plus component, just looking at this density of 2X.
I think if you look at the density, that helps a lot. You get rid of the 55. I, I talked to you before, and like, the product type delivers, who's going to buy it more than the age, I think?
Okay.
You know, so a family of four is not buying a small condo and living there, it's just not happening. You're going to have empty nesters, you're going to have, you know...
To Eric's point, it'll be first time.
Dueling, coming home with kids, coming in, saying, hey, this is a great starter, we love Bolton. You know, maybe at some point they buy the single family, but at least you have that.
So that would make it a little more palatable to developers?
Yeah. I, I mean, I think there's that sell-out risk when you're getting these bigger projects.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
You never know when the economy's going to turn.
So the other, right, music chairs ends.
So when we talk about affordable, like that 20 or 25%, Bolton right now, I think, sits at 3.6% affordable, so we really want to bring that number up, and that's maybe something we could talk about here, too, just our overall plan for affordable units, you know, so really, you know...
Then you could maybe take it another step and go for apartments, because apartments, then with the affordable, you get 25% affordable, but 100% of them count towards the affordable thing. So there, I might be more specific on where the location is versus a whole town, because at the same time, you still want to hold the integrity of the town. And if you have areas closer to 495, right off the highway, that are like, you know, quite honestly, the property, the auction, the old auction...
It's going to fit within the town a lot better, and you have one of those.
Fantastic location for something like that, so...
Because being at 3.6%, we're subject, we're at the mercy of 40Bs that can go wherever they want.
Right, so, I mean...
A couple of apartment buildings, as was originally proposed, were craftsmen's going in them. Kind of the initial opening salvo there. Four-story buildings, and when the answer, the question about fire trucks is, I believe, you got mutually from Hudson, so you're all set.
So was that, was that a discussion in town, or did it never, not make it that far? Was there, what was the opinion on apartments?
That was, the developer had it in front of ZBA as a 40B, and I forget, and it kind of, I think he may have had some health issues or something, and...
It actually, it came two different times. It came one way back, early, I'm not going to say early, probably mid-'70s, there was one for both of them. And then that one just never went anywhere. And then the second one, you're right, he had some health issues and kind of went away and came back as another project a few years later, and that never got built either.
That went away, now it's...
I mean, that property went through eight different things, from driving range for golf to warehouses.
Because, I mean, because I personally think that an apartment complex would be really good for the diversity in town, but I wonder what the opinion of the overall town people would be against it, or, I mean, maybe it's all just on, depending on the location of where it would be?
I think a lot of this word's going to be cited, yeah, that's the big thing, more than anything else, you know? I mean, you know, there's a couple of things in Bolton that have always held back, somebody, you know, more 40Bs, and one of which is being, is septic system issues. I mean, that's the big thing. And to be very honest, I think a lot of developers are a little bit timid to come to Bolton with 40B, because our previous history, it's, it's many, many years to work your way through that process. And if you're going to tie up a piece of land for a million bucks in Bolton, and spend five years to get a permit, and I can do it in Leominster for six months, I'm going to Leominster, you know, even though maybe you don't pay as much money, but...
So, but, so that permitting process, would this bylaw improve that?
It definitely would, yeah.
Instead of having to do an individual plan that has to go before town meeting, you know, if we had this bylaw, that would...
Absolutely, yeah. It helps. I mean, you know, 40B, you basically dealing with a ZBA, but the way we do things in Bolton, all the boards get involved anyways, and it just takes a long time to work your way through that process. This one appears on the surface, like, I think I mentioned earlier, the first one probably goes through relatively easily. If it comes out to be a great project, the second one will go through relatively easy. If there's problems with the first one, we're not wanting the second again. It's going to be here forever.
I was wondering why...
The benefit is, I mean, the way this is written, you're controlling that density based upon conventional zoning somewhat. You know, obviously you're adding incentives there based on affordability, but specifically dealing with 40B, you're dealing with mass housing, and it's not dictated at all by what could conventionally zone, so you're really looking at those pieces of property where, eventually, you can only get one lot.
Yeah.
It's large enough where if you work through mass housing, you're going to get density, so it just, it, it helps offset and use that property more wisely.
That was definitely one of the driving factors, to be able to have control of the process.
You, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I will. You've got a live project. If you layer this on and you kind of remove the 55-plus component, if you just, or maybe you want to comment with a 55-plus element to it, I was kind of thinking, without that, just smaller dwellings, a 2X type of a density, what's your gut reaction, maybe, is that, yeah, that, that could probably make sense, or that's way off, it's got to be 3X, it's got to be 4X? I'm going based on...
It's not too far off.
Okay.
It's not too far off. I mean, what you've got to remember is, again, with the septic and everything like that, when you get the additional density, your infrastructure costs goes way up.
Wastewater treatment.
Wastewater treatment, additional roadways, you got, you know, all that stuff, you know, because rule of thumb is like, hey, your development cost has got to be 30% of your overall, or your land cost with development has got to be 30% of the sale price, or, you know, there's stupid rules of thumb that we try to use. It goes way up, you know, you've got to put a package plan in, or I can go to the engineers, hey, you know, given my land soils, what am I going to have to do? So there's more time, time is money, how long does it take me to get through the process? So, you know, for me specifically, that, this one live project, I think I told you all along, I'm like, I think you miss me already, I'm too late, you know, I'm like, because it's going to take me another year, this has got to go through all kinds of permitting, I'm like, can't do it. But if you put this in place now, now you might catch me, catch the eye and say, all right, hey, we could do this, and we talked about like that project in Concord with the cottages, and so, I think some of those type of programs would work wonderfully here.
Is Concord age-restricted, that asset?
No, I don't believe that one is.
Okay. It's just a denser overlay with smaller dwellings?
Yeah.
Probably a cap on bedrooms, cap on square footage?
Yeah. I forget exactly how it was, but, you know, there is a demand, river, yeah, river.
For those of you that are interested in seeing what that one looks like, I can pass this around. This is the river lock.
Do you think it makes more sense to put a cap on square footage, bedroom, both? Does one make no sense in your mind?
Some towns have both, Hudson has both.
Okay.
They have a square footage and bedroom.
What, do you know what it is?
Two bedrooms, 2,400 square foot.
Okay.
I mean, as I'm getting older, I don't want a house that goes to 2,000 feet.
That's what my dad said.
Yeah, like, why would I want a big house? Like, when I was 25, I wanted a 5,000 square foot house.
I think it does make sense almost to, to put a cap on both, because you could have, I mean, you could fit four bedrooms in a 2,400 square house, I mean, it all doesn't hide.
Well, if we went away from the old 55, definitely... I mean, maybe you catch two audiences. Like you said, you're trying to catch the first-time home buyer. You're trying to catch the seniors.
Catching that first-time home buyer, I think, is really big, because, I mean, maybe they have a newborn, but by the time somebody's getting close to school, they're having the second one, they're going to be looking for a single-family home.
And they're 55?
I'm saying if we...
Maybe it's a second one. Maybe I miss them. We wish no age limit. The idea is to make it not loosey-goose, but to make it attractive to developers to try and...
I mean, so, I mean, we went through all this work for the overlay district, and in the end, the 10%, people just laugh at it. So we did all this work for nothing, pretty much, you know? So we want to make this work.
So I have a couple of questions.
Please introduce yourselves, sir.
I am Doug Story, and I live at United Spectacle Hill Road in Bolton. I'm a builder, used to be on the planning board. So if you want this to work, there needs to be enough incentive here to do it, and it seems like you put a lot of roadblocks in.
Specifically what?
Well, I have one question first.
Yeah.
Is this an overlay that would supersede existing zoning in all ways? Like, would this supersede the 1 for 7 affordable inclusionary zoning bylaw?
I don't think we've thought that far.
Okay, so you either have to decide if it supersedes it or not, and...
To take away that...
And I think it's fine to do that, but I would just get rid of two dwelling units, and I would just say everyone has to have 25% affordable and give them up to four.
Well, so we said 2X density with whatever restriction, and then 4X if you do 25% affordable?
I mean, you don't want to do, just in theory, you don't want to do housing without any affordable.
Right.
Just saying we don't give them an option, we just say, yeah, 4X, 25% affordable.
Or you could say that the inclusionary housing stays as part of it, and it's 1 for 7, it's not quite 25%.
One for the other.
Yeah.
So onto the 2X, it's 1 for 7?
Yeah. But I would get rid of the open space, because, you know, as everyone's been talking about, it's hard enough to do this density and then also do septic, you know, on this land, and any septic that anybody does, it's probably going to be a pretty big piece of open space.
Yeah, but we were just thinking, taking the phosphored as like the footprint, you think?
I know, but once you do 25% open space and septic, and...
Or you could exclude the septic from the open, as part of the open space, or count it as part of the open space.
Yeah, you definitely should, definitely should count it.
We need nitrogen, so...
Or what about reducing it to like 100%? I just think if we take out open space altogether, I think people in town might, that might be a concern.
Well, that's where I was saying, if you have the septic, if you include that as part of the open space, because you're right, that's going to be a huge part of your space.
It really comes down to, you know, let's just say you had a 20-acre parcel, which, you know, that's pretty big, but, you know, now you've got to take five acres of open space, and then I've got to use several acres for my septic system, you know, it cuts down what I can build to make it worthwhile. So you could include, you know, include anything in the open space, but I would go for more density and just make the affordable housing easy. Either existing bylaw or just say 25%.
4X and 25% or 4X and existing 1 to 7 bylaw?
You know... You know, I don't know, is four all you can do to do a septic system here or, you know, I don't know why four's a magic number.
It's not.
Why not six?
We threw, I'm looking for the...
Talk about small housing and I don't know why you only have two dwelling units attached, why not three or four? You know, make it easy, make it easier to build for more affordable...
More unit townhouses.
I mean, look at...
Yeah, based on septic anyway, it's four units per acre, you know, and 400 gallons per acre anyway by septic, cause everything in town's well in septic.
Okay, yeah. Which the, the age restriction helps with that a little bit, but...
But, you know, a two-unit versus a three-unit versus a four-unit, what's the difference? And it's definitely costs less to build a three-unit than a two-unit and a four-unit than a three-unit. So that's another thing, it would be an incentive to a builder that would make it a little bit more, and again, if you look at, you know, the one down at the campground, you know, those are all multi-unit buildings and they're fine and nobody has a problem with them and...
How many in one cluster down there?
At least four, I would think, yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's threes and fours.
Kind of along the lines of you saying, we used to live in Ridgefield in Clinton and that was like, what, 350 units and there's no age restriction and I don't, I mean, I don't, never seen any kids, very, you know, very small percent.
Sure.
I mean, I lived there for eight years, I mean...
I think you're better off doing bedrooms and forget about age restriction.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I was saying, there was no age restriction and I barely saw many kids living there, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, right.
It's just the, the type of unit didn't attract families with kids.
Anything, I live in this complex southbound, it's like you had 300 units and there's like 20 kids at the box.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But, you know, again, I ask the question as we've talked about on other things, do you really want this to work and if you do, you gotta, you gotta come up with something that's attractive.
Well, that's why we're having this.
And you don't wanna nip around the edges, make it...
Which is, you know, what we usually do is nip around the edges and then nothing happens.
Exactly.
What else is...
But don't give up the affordable, I mean, you gotta have it one way or another.
Well, we don't, we want the affordable.
What, what other roadblocks do you see?
Yeah, that's unattractive.
So, the biggest ones to me are the, the open space, if it doesn't include the septic and if you include everything, then, then that can work.
Okay.
The, the only two units attached.
Maybe, maybe allowing up to four.
At least four.
No, when you say, you're saying like, yeah, separate units attached, not bedrooms and stuff, you just say...
Right, right, no.
So four, two bedrooms?
Maybe I read that wrong, I thought it was saying that you could only have two units attached.
I think that's, that is what it was saying.
Make it four.
Okay.
Up to four. And then, and then you've gotta clarify the affordable housing so it's not, you know, gray for the developer and he's gonna exactly what requirements are and how many he has to do. And, and then if, you know, if you go with, I, I would just get rid of the two units unless you do affordable and just say there's gotta be affordable and give them up to four and maybe go up to six, you know, if it can work, if it can't work, then it doesn't really matter, but...
Up to 20 if it worked for the septic.
Well, you could get a treatment plant and then you can make that work.
Right, that's why I'd rather...
I mean, I don't think you want a huge development, but you, you probably wouldn't mind 20 and 30 and 40 unit developments that were, you know, small houses. And that would become attractive.
Is it commonsensical to put a cap of total units within the project or not? Do you think that's...
It could if you, if you wanna say, I don't want this to be huge, yeah.
Well, so in the, in the overlay, we, we put the number at 10 units per acre, I mean, that is in the overlay.
Yeah?
Yeah. There was originally eight and then we changed it to 10, that's right, and that passed.
And does this supersede the, the footprint by law? You need to make sure that it does.
That's a big thing, the other by law.
Because that's the biggest killer, you know, you don't, you can only cover 8% of your lot and, you know, it's just not a problem. So that should, that should be called out in here, you could say that that by law's not happening.
And you wouldn't suggest having a higher footprint percentage?
I don't think, I don't think you can get to the right number, I think the right number is like 50%, I don't think you're ever gonna get there.
Yeah.
So I would just take it out.
You say the footprint by law is excluded for this?
Yeah.
You have the restrictions with the square footage and units.
Yeah, use the square footage and the...
And the bedrooms.
You don't wanna get caught with a...
And maybe have a cap on the total number of units if you're, you know, you're afraid that somebody might go, oh, great, I can do a 200-unit development on, you know...
Too big.
On 58, 58 dollars, that might be a bit much.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Actually, I know we have a couple of realtors in Gwen and Rick here, I wonder if you could speak on interest, you know, what you've seen in the market for either over 55 or smaller units, you know, both options.
I think we can support more of 50 guys. Look at the Regency, it's all sold out. There's been a couple on the market so far this year and they've been snapped up.
How is Toll Brothers doing at Stell? Do we know how they're doing? They're not ready at airport?
They're trucking right along, but there's not gonna be anything ready to be sold there for a year.
For a while.
It's gonna be nice when it's done.
It looks it.
That's a big, long project.
So they're having activity now, though?
Yeah, just to speak to that, we did that project as well. So they opened it up in February, they've already sold 25%.
And that's over 55?
Have they, really?
Yeah, which I've always questioned that too, especially talking to Jeff, but, you know, I was surprised the numbers that they turned around there.
Well, the big thing with those projects always though is the first 25, 50% sell like that, it's the last 50% be dragging.
But like, what's the time?
Where all the money is.
At Regency, what's the time on the market for an open unit?
Now?
Yeah.
A week.
What are they trading for?
There's nothing, I don't mind.
There's one for 420 right now.
Yeah, they're right around there, take low 40s, miss 40s.
So once you start adding land costs and development costs and new construction costs, 420 is, you're kinda right there, I mean, you're like breaking even.
Maybe.
Maybe, especially if you're throwing the affordable on top of that.
And so Regency is 60 units on 15 acres, so it's 4X.
Four times that.
It's easy to snap things up if they're trading below what you can build them for.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Doesn't help.
Sure.
But if you start looking for higher prices, you start getting in trouble.
Right.
600 and under.
Right, but that's the problem. Once you, cause when you're dealing with denser sites, your infrastructure costs are through the roof and, you know, construction costs right now are through the roof cause all the building codes have gone, you know, energy codes are crazy, so you're...
Well, those are all gonna continue to be...
Two-by-six construction, insulation, it used to be five grand insulated housing, now it's 25 grand insulated.
The Regency set point is maybe less because it was cheaper to build 15, 20 years ago?
Right, right, so, but if you're going in new, you're all sudden, you gotta hit the 525.
That's, that's where Stell is now. You can buy them for six, fully, fully loaded, but you're not really buying them for four, right?
But that's where the density, as he talked about earlier, the, you know, the four-units, five-unit or six-unit helps you bring your build cost down, your infrastructure cost is still very high.
Yeah, that's not gonna change.
And I think, you know, you're talking about limiting the number of units on it, I mean, obviously you'd have to have a large parcel to do a big one and it's gonna have some good sales besides, but, I mean, you kinda hit a break-even point when you get around, when you meet the infamous 10,000 gallons per day and the septic isn't...
66.
Yeah, well, no, yeah, and then you go into a 66 bedroom.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then you, you know, then you go into the, or 66, yes, you're right, but 10,000 gallons per day, cause once you get beyond that, you go into a treatment plant, if you're gonna do...
Forget about it.
Well, they gotta go.
Then you gotta, then it's gonna be a big project because you spend a couple of million bucks just to put the treatment plant in, so, you know...
And you're doing coverage to the...
I know, you've told me before, what's the logic behind 66, the number?
66 units, if it's over 55 housing, that's you to 9,900 gallons per day.
Groundwater discharge.
Groundwater discharge permit.
You can avoid the treatment.
So that, so that pushes you...
But that's for a certain amount of acres?
Well, it's just, it's just a number of gallons per day on a...
For a subdivision or a project?
Or a project.
Any project.
Over 50, yeah, for any project, but if you're doing over 55, you only have to do 150 gallons per day per unit instead of 110 gallons per bedroom, okay? So whichever way you look at it, it still comes out, you gotta stay below that 10,000 gallon per day. Once you hit that, like you said, you're in a groundwater discharge for treatment plants and the price goes up so drastically, they, now you're looking at, you gotta do 120, 130 units to break even, so...
And you try frames longer too, cause you need more permitting.
I had Carrick's go up and all.
So it's like you're either at a 50-unit development or a 200-unit development.
Well, you're at 66 maximum.
66 age restricted as well.
You're not gonna see a 67-unit development.
No, no, but 66 is...
Age restricted.
You keep doing bedrooms, it's less.
150 gallons per unit.
Yeah, if it's not age restricted...
It's 66 two-bedroom units.
Right, if it's not age restricted, you're gonna be back to, I think it was 40, whatever it is, something like that, yeah. Which is basically what the project is on Sherwood Road, I mean, they, that was designed, it was approved as a 40B for, I forget how many units with the treatment plant, the numbers just never worked. So then they came back, refiled with the ZBA, reduced the size of it down so they could just use septic systems, so...
This is helpful, any more thoughts? I know we're running up towards...
Just to kind of talk about on Doug's point too with the open space, cause the other thing that really eats up space on these little subdivisions developments is public water supply. Being in Bolton, the fact that we have no town water is, all of these units would require a public water supply which had a zone one that has to be completely...
Oh, you can't have, yeah, you can't have septic.
You know, so, so in terms of that alone, just setting aside space on these developments that won't be developed, you know, it's just something that you need to bear in mind.
Yeah, I would, you know, there's no reason why you can't say for this type of development that that is okay to be counted as the open space.
True.
Cause it's open space, it's never gonna be...
I think that's a good point, I mean, the, the septic system above it, I mean, I know you can obviously put a septic system below parking, but that, you know, then wouldn't be to go towards this, but the, the intent is to allow for some vegetated area and require it, so I would have no problems including...
Everybody's like, why is there more business in Bolton? That's part of it, is the fact that, you know, any business that requires public water supply, you start looking at the acreage you need and the land you set aside, it's difficult to do on these pieces of...
That's a whole nother conversation.
Any other thoughts? We'll talk about this as much. Well, thank you guys for your input.
I think it's a great start, cause the reason why I say this, when I was on the planning board back in the early 80s, we tried to do something like this and we get blown out of the water, so...
By public, why? Public sentiment?
Yeah, we never even made it as far as getting to a town meeting, we had meetings like this and everybody was dead-set against it.
Okay, definitely think that the opinions in town are...
The population has changed, but the economics have changed.
Well, no, it's the tax bill. Be real.
There you go. I've waited for long time. There needs to be some balance and I think there's more balance in other towns, I think it's going to create in a, it's gonna create an undesirable town, it hasn't started to do already. And we wanna prevent that.
No variety's not a bad idea. Well, I think the other thing is, you know, if, if you go forward with this and it's on the, on the books, it's isn't, you know, a possibility, like you said, if somebody's looking at doing a 40B versus doing this, maybe you can't get as many units, but the whole timeframe thing comes into get, how long is it gonna take me to get through this? I can do 40 units.
High value mine.
If I was gonna do 80 as a 40B and I still gotta put 25% aside or whatever it is nowadays, might as well build this room, it's a lot easier.
Right.
Yeah, you know, so...
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Environmental Pools, if you guys wanna come up?
There you go. Introduce yourself. That was an interesting little meeting there, I can see. In the process of hopefully owning 357 Main Street, the job, we're really excited about big time. My company, Environmental Pools, is 29 years old. I'm 41 years in the Godfrey's Pool business. We're really proud of the fact that we're ranked 35th in the country as a pool builder, which is something that our employees are very proud of. And from the very first time I brought it over to that property, I wasn't thinking over 55. I was looking at the rocks, I was looking at the building, I was looking at the property and said to Andrew, my, all this sun, quote-unquote, this is a pipe dream, don't get your outside, this is like, it's, he lives in Buspero, we currently operate on Business Lot of Chelmsford. So, we're in the process of, we really just got purchase and sale side, so we're gonna be going through the process next month or so. But just on the same topic, it is something that certainly is interesting, like Rick knows, I had no really idea, he sends me an email today and, you know, there's always that possibility, but our absolute plan is to take that building and bring it up to what it looked like in 2008 or before. It's interesting, it was built in 74, the year that I graduated high school, there's all sorts of all that sort of stuff. We've met with Erica, we've met with Mike, because I get it, with us, it's more a process where we don't need all the space in that building, we're about 35 employees, and once our guys go off to work, there's probably eight or 10 people in the building. But we see great opportunity for growth, we're kind of already determined, you know, talking to Mike, you guys would certainly know better that, you know, we're a swimming pool company, so we're really a design-build company, which is, we're a retail business, like Mike said, when you do sell pools, we have clients come to our facility now mainly for samples, et cetera, like that, so, we're gonna, we're gonna kinda start off and work with Erica and Mike and obviously with the board when we get to that point of like, what we're gonna do in the interior of the building, again, we have the septic which has already been designed, so we feel really comfortable there, we're gonna go through that process. We still have to meet the lieutenant on the fire suppression situation.
What would you do in the building? Is it storage, is it...
Yeah, well, mainly how, like if you come to our office now, we don't manufacture anything whatsoever there, it's more like in a piece of that building, like, I don't know if you're familiar with the building, so that piece of the side, like our dream world is to have our landscape architect in that building, maybe our accountant's in that building, things along that line, the building itself, like, we were, we're already thinking, like, we're designed, like, I've designed since I was cut out of college, that's what I do, right? I'll show you a picture of a rock I saw over the other... I'm crazy, it was one of the first that really worked with rocks back in the late, early 80s, but, so, that facility there, we're really looking at making it more of a design piece inside, we have a lot of samples, a lot, yeah, a lot of stuff. You know, we've, we've often thought about venturing into the sale of furniture, but You know, we've, we've often thought about venturing into the sale of furniture, but more for convenience for our clients than anything else. We're really, like, again, we're design-build in a very large service department, which really just services environmental pool clients. We don't really work with, with any other pools in that. So the building isn't really set up perfectly for us from a storage standpoint. But Lord knows, there's enough parking out there, and when we talked in the beginning, and Mike said, I should probably mention this is, you know, depending on the timeframe, like, I would see building, like, a forty by sixty Morton building there to keep that separate from our office space. So we're really gonna focus on getting the building to where, we have pretty good square footage where we are now, making the front really a display area. And then we've actually talked about an indoor pool in that little, I mean, who knows, if it came down to a system, we built twenty-eight thousand gallon vessels all the time, so not that I wanna go down that road, but it's certainly, we, we could get creative there.
So more of a showroom and then if storage was a component, that's what the building has.
Yeah, but we're, we're gonna store there, yeah, we're gonna store there for sure initially, and again, we're gonna have to lay that all out. We've kind of done a bit of a floor plan when we met with Mike and Erica at the very beginning of the process. But just knowing, you know, we don't, it's nice to have a storage building outside, like, we live, we have a fifty by sixty barn that was built in eighteen ninety in Chelmsford. We were able to use the storage along with our office, so we're, we definitely need storage space, there's no question. We do, we do a lot of work with natural stone, granite paving, coping, so items like that, we typically store outside anyway. So again, the, the beauty of the building is every, you know, they have the big parking behind the building as well. You know, the building being set back off the road like that is just so, like, I love that factor, you know, to have that.
Yeah, so you can't.
Yeah, then when they come up, I can't wait till they, and when we do fix the outside and that, to me, it's not even in bad shape now, but when we really do what we do every day, the building will, will make Bolton proud for sure.
So it's a destination business, it's not like you need sightlines from the roads, or this.
No, not at all. I mean, our clients.
They almost don't want them.
No, I really don't.
No, we rather have it, which is kind of the nice piece of it. I mean, right now, our clients come to our office to pick tile, pebble finishes, deck materials, you know, I, I definitely would like to build a water feature out there, you know, have some moving water out there and, I mean, so we're really just, again, yesterday I signed the PNS, it's all happened really fast, it's kind of amazing.
What would you do to the structure itself? Are you gonna add on?
No, we really, in fact.
It's all inside.
Yeah, it's all inside. We're not gonna, like, be wood structure, it's to the far west side. Like, I really, my thought is, you know, to really do that over there, take down a few trees there. So really, we don't need any more space. We were even thinking the annex buildings up to the, to the right side, we might say that we really need that piece.
All the way on the east.
Yeah, exactly. That's the other thing, as, as we talk about, you know, what you guys were mentioning earlier with, with housing, it's like, and Lord only knows, but when they designed that building, they designed that building to the far west piece of that property, which to me was brilliant, and from the very, I'm like, this is like, was really, whether it was cause there was no ledge there, because there was so much rock on that property.
Things also wet, I mean, the.
Yeah, that's the, that's the wet side of it, and the wetlands are on the further back side. But again, like, I've, I can't tell you how many clients I've taken through conservation and we'll be working with the same engineer who we've worked with before, who seems to know the property and. So with us, it's like, two things, I've had two jobs in forty-one years, so I'm not a jump around type of guy, been married thirty-one years. The point is, like, I tend to do more planning and I'm not like super fast. The end results is what I usually am very happy with. So I'm not looking at going in there and like ripping this out, ripping that out, you know, that's not really, we wouldn't even see probably, depending on, you know, the process with the permitting piece of it. Like, our dream world, we'd probably be getting into the building like next year, even if we do get this thing rolling sooner than later.
For us, it's just a general sentiment, I think a bunch of us share, it's not dissimilar from the conversation we just had. This town is a wonderful town. It, it goes in kind of a singular direction though.
Right.
And a little bit of diversity, whether that is commercial or retail or a, a mixed variety of housing stock, is kind of what we're after. We're after it for financial implications, we're after it for desirability of, of the current residents and attractiveness of the new residents, keep property values high, all that fun stuff. Make taxes make a little bit more sense, all of that stuff, so.
And I think for that property in particular, you know, cause we have so few limited business space that, as Rick will tell you, I mean, he asked us about the cottage building a couple of years ago. We, we, we kind of, we kind of pushed him off because, you know, we didn't wanna give up one of our limited businesses, so I'm very happy to see that you're interested in the property, and I went and looked on your website and the work looks amazing.
So I think. What's your trade area?
Gilbert and Wellesley, Brookline, South Bay area, all, we're all over these, I mean, I have eight pools in Bermuda, so.
Okay.
All over the island.
Okay, okay.
I mean, your webpage shows really well and your work looks great, so, I mean, I think you would fit.
Here's Skinner, Birmingham, Bolton, and, I mean, as you know, this has been on the property, it's been on the market for a really long time. She's had lots of people look at it and has turned lots of people away because she wants the right thing to go in that property. Longtime residents, you know, she's been very careful about having the right thing happen on that site, and we think we found it here. And so we're very hopeful that you will agree with us and, and we're hopeful that this goes through, cause we, we really would like it to move forward.
Sounds great.
Yeah, to, to dovetail quickly with, with what she was saying, as Erica knows, we've had a lot of activity on the site recently. We had a number of suitors looking at it and, and we, we've considered everything. When, when we met with, with these guys, they wanted to bring their headquarters to Bolton.
That's nice.
They wanted to potentially create some jobs in Bolton. And all the things, as you know, I've had a lot of experience with you guys over the years, and I've heard this from you before, that, especially about this parcel, it being limited business and what you'd like to have there, and we thought, this is a great.
Definitely.
In the land, but it's also a great fit for.
Yeah.
Well, it's nice to see that this, I know one of the constraints of it being a limited business is that it is
Exactly.
And high, and that can turn away a lot of businesses that need that curb appeal, so it's, it's nice to know that there's, that's not necessarily
Not at all.
An important factor for you guys and it actually works with you.
And even like from a standpoint, because you've got everything that you build is permitted, so I've worked with building departments forever, worked with engineers forever, and, but it's funny, on a commercial property, like, if we were to build a display pool there, then we, we really just have to go through the whole permitting process, is that like, you'd have to go in front of the board, the planning board for, for a special, for a pool as well too?
No, it's just, it's just the Board of Health, I believe, or, or in ZBA, if you're messing with setbacks.
Exactly.
And if you're within, if you're within a wetland, if you're within a hundred feet of the water, you need to go to Concombre. So it all depends on where it's located.
Yeah, yeah, if it's not in a wetland, then it's, there's no setbacks. I mean, it might even just be Mike, if there's no setback issues and there's no wetlands areas, it's just a building.
Yeah, that's how we typically go with residential conservation, Board of Health, building.
Yeah. Yeah, we're.
So that's kind of our plan.
And I think with this current makeup of the planning board, I think you'll find that we're definitely willing to work with a special permit. I mean, with your previous potential a year ago, so, I mean, we tried to work really fast, I mean, it didn't work out with them, but, but I don't, I don't, you know, I don't think you're, you're not gonna find any major.
Why, why wouldn't it work out? Cause they wanted to zone it and do something.
It was nothing to do with town or anything, it was just, for them personally, it didn't work out.
Exactly.
It had nothing to do with.
It seems like it's a perfect property. Let me see that picture real quick, Jorge, this is the craziest thing. So this is after we signed the offer, I went up there, I was a little, I was a little excited, I thought I was crazy, and I walked by the, the rock which basically sits between the two parking lots.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
It literally is like the old man of mountain Bolton. And what I would say is.
There's some, there's information about that rock.
It's phenomenal.
Martha Rellington should have been here.
Like, I would say, I would guarantee as long as I own the property, that rock will never rupture. People that know me know how I feel, but I mean, it was like, I sent a picture to my wife, I'm like, am I losing my? I actually walked away and walked back and said, I'm not gonna see that again. It was just too vivid, but.
We're gonna have to connect you up with, we're gonna have to connect you up with Frank Patterson, cause he's another fan of rocks.
Building a rock up there.
Frank Patterson talks about rocks a lot, so you guys, you know, have to get together.
Can I, can I see the picture?
Yeah.
See, we did see this rock.
So now we're, we're, I think I can bring employment to Bolton as well.
I mean, that's, that's very.
Good.
The building, see, that building could be set up for professionals that work with us, again, like accountants, I mean, because it has that separate wing piece of it too, that, you know, we have people that we've worked with for years that, you know, are like, geez, Andy, maybe we'd be interested in moving our office over the other.
The more you can improve the assessed value, the better for us.
And then the other side, I'm just throwing this out because, other than Rick sending me that email, cause I was just kind of floored, like, oh, you know, it's exciting. But I wonder, and again, I could have to look at the plot plan and everything, I wonder if you could ever maintain the building and still have, you know, a few, are units on that same property with it being so far west? And again, I know that's an engineering question.
It's an engineering question. Rick will know a lot more than I will. I, I think there's a lot of rock on the site, I think if anything, when you talk about septic, you might have some limitations, but that's, that's.
Under the current.
Right, you have some bylaws.
Village overlay, which allows residential along with a commercial use.
Yeah, yeah, true. And actually, so that was on that property, that's on that property.
Yeah, it benefits from it now, that's right, yeah, that's right.
So the mixed-use village overlay allows for a mix of housing and business.
On a number of sites in town, and that's one of them, so it's a.
So you have options there.
So there probably be, those will probably be his options on sixty-one, I might have my options, but that's fine too, that's fine. So no, we, we're excited to be in Bolton, I'm telling you right now, you can't imagine, it's, it's great for a environmental pool still. As much as it's a win, I think for the town, I mean, this town is, you know, to me, it's like the Little Cog or whatever, we're in Cog and Cali all the time, and it's like, it's nice on our, the global environment, let's do it. So no, we look forward to getting through the process.
So we'll be seeing a, a special.
Special permit application.
Application.
Yeah, that's probably about a month or so away, but yeah, that'll be next.
Andy, I had given you a copy of the rules and regulations.
You did.
Do you have any specific questions for the board on what you need to submit since you're here?
I don't, I'd rather spend a little bit more time, I probably wanna sit with the engineer as well too, and just kind of go over with him. I'll, you have an extra copy too?
You can take this copy, I have, you know, there's things in there that.
Will you read, I'll have to, I have to tell you too, will you read this? It is a little intimidating, like. You gotta have, this is like, this is, no, seriously, it was like.
But that's why I'm here, you can contact me and I can figure it out.
Oh, yeah, it's like, wow, this is an awful.
So you're gonna be working with Brendan Descharnes?
Yeah, absolutely.
He's very.
Absolute.
And he has a.
He's very familiar.
I mean, he, he's got all those memorized.
I'll have to be working with Mike too, boy, Mike's gonna be our best friend right there.
Good luck guys, look forward to it.
You think we're gonna.
Take the stuff down first.
Your, your future.
Oh, exactly.
Go to the website, just Google environmental pools.
Yeah, I worked at it, I believe.
Worked myself, so.
Sorry about that.
Brought a couple of these too.
I'll take one of those.
I said, all right, you guys are always.
I want a pool so badly, I don't even have a front door, but. I mean, we gotta join. I just like.
Is it really?
Oh, really?
Chamber. We used to feel very well.
You have a big front garage?
Yeah.
Raise it up.
Who's coming in for Ways of Means, Mary?
I believe the entire committee's coming in, are you ready?
You work super early. Do you want to do the administration stuff?
Sure. Airbnb, that was just something that was put in my mailbox for you, that's what actually I'm.
Take one. Was it taken, so what, could you summarize what's coming?
I honestly haven't even written it, I just received it as well.
So what's the thing from?
You know, a good one?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the, what's?
ZBA. So I think about maybe a year ago, we talked about possibly updating the master plan. I think that was before I even went on maturity, so it was a while ago.
Yeah, when was the last time the master plan was?
It was updated about ten years ago, but the date says two thousand and six, I think they actually like adopted it in two thousand and nine.
Could I just, one question, focus first? So they're taking, but they're appealing the state for the ZBAs.
I honestly haven't even read it, so I have no idea what's in that packet.
I have to wait until it's up, I'll be ready to.
Yeah, I was trying to understand.
Straight to Mike, so I think we're starting.
We're, we're, I'm looking at the administration, I don't.
Yeah, we're, we're.
So the first one was updating the master.
I think you're right on value.
Okay.
That was just in my mailbox as mail for you guys.
I just wasn't ready to change this, sorry.
This is now for us to look at at home, or for us to. Sorry.
It's just gonna be dangerous. Yeah, I guess what, I don't know.
Oh, this is the Airbnb stuff.
Yeah.
And that's what we expect at the last meeting.
The reconsideration, but why is it coming to us? Shouldn't it be going to ZBA?
They just CC'd everyone in town.
Yeah, probably because the V was here. I mean, if the letter's two.
I mean, you heard my opinion, I think he's, I think they're right, so.
That's cool.
You know. I don't agree with my information, so I don't know how, what processes.
I think he had, it goes to this.
But wasn't it, it was past the thirty days or something, so they can't do that, or?
No, so I had legal counsel weigh in, I mean, technically, we really shouldn't even be talking about this, because it's not on the agenda, but I did have legal counsel weigh in and they essentially, Brian Fox said, just have them provide a request for zoning enforcement again, and then Mike can basically provide a response to that, and then they can appeal that response. So I don't, I'm assuming that's what this is, but maybe it's not, I don't know what's in that packet.
Yeah, I mean, they, they should just go before the ZBA and I think you'll be settled, because I kind of feel like he disagreed with himself at the end. Mike, kinda talk.
I had, yeah, I had talked to Mike.
I'm not sure if you fight for very hard. I mean, the best thing is to get some good bylaws in place around it to prevent from going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. So hopefully there's some good examples, we hear a lot of other people.
And where?
In.
Okay, there are case studies.
I, I haven't looked at it, so hopefully.
I, I looked up at a lot, I mean, every town does something different, there's a, you know, a lot of different approaches.
Yes. So we're.
And the state's taking it, doing something.
Yeah, 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 we definitely need to address it, and I think we will.
All right, so now we're talking about updating the master plan?
Yes, so it's been ten years and it's recommended that towns update their master plans roughly every, every decade. So I think it's something that we should be looking at. I know a lot of the, sort of the goals within the master plan we've accomplished at this point, so I think it's worth now setting new goals for the town. And I essentially wanted to get your input on how you wanted to start that process. I think previously there was a committee that was formed that looked at updating it and then actually did the updates, or I don't even know if it was updates or if they put it together. So how does the board feel about, over the summer, me looking at advertising in the paper potentially for candidates to be part of that committee?
Like an advisory to us?
Advisory, but more than that, even actually making the updates if they feel the updates are needed.
Sure, do we have a, like a say at all?
Oh, of course, of course. I, I, I think it's sort of a two-pronged approach where it would be looking at the master plan, seeing what we've accomplished, what we haven't accomplished, and whether or not it's actually a good time to be updating it. Maybe there's enough in here that we haven't done that, let's wait a year or two, I, I don't know, I think that we need a committee to really kind of dive into it and give us, give the board good feedback on, on what we should be doing. But we also.
Should have a member here on the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, should we look at it first and have a discussion about what we think needs to be done before we?
Sure.
To, to, to set an agenda?
If we have a member here on the committee.
But I'm saying if we, if we have a discussion first, kind of set an agenda, like, you know, for, for a committee, for a.
Yeah, might, might make sense, just because if your suggestion of maybe we don't need to update it and maybe there's enough goals, we would look at that and we would decide that ahead of time versus going out and advertising and turning phones, so I think you're right. It probably makes sense to look at it first, see if there's enough to warrant forming a committee.
Exactly. Yeah, we don't wanna form a committee and then be like, oh, well, chill.
Maybe we don't, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
I mean, it's also over the summer, it's the best time to find people, to get people, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
So maybe, maybe we should review it over the summer and then talk about it.
In, come September, September, okay.
I think that's a good idea.
So there's this great spreadsheet that's at the back of the master plan that essentially basically lists all of the various goals for the town, and I kind of went through today and had checked off ones that we've, that we've completed, ones that are ongoing, so I. that we've completed, ones that are ongoing, so I think that's a really helpful tool, so if you guys want to look at that over the summer, and kind of, you know.
How do you, how do you know we completed it?
Well, for example, one of the goals was capacity misuse village over in the district, we did that, so we can check that box.
Oh, so it doesn't, it doesn't say completed here, though, does it?
No, 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 this was, this was put together when they actually did the master plan.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so then we just need to go through these, check off the ones that happened, completed, and?
Yeah.
Okay. And obviously, the ones that are labeled priority high, we would want to look at to see how we're doing.
So we're not even anywhere close to the approved housing plan?
No.
First on the list.
I mean, that's, you know, and, well, I wanted to potentially open that up as well.
That can be a future discussion, I can, I can add that to an agenda.
Now, all right, so I, I guess the, the tough thing here is, you know, obviously, the responsibility of this checklist covers multiple boards and committees, so what is the best way to kind of move forward with this?
If, I, I think initially, if you have questions, just send your questions to me, and hopefully, I can answer them, just because I do have some involvement in a lot of the different boards, so I maybe want to clarify, you know, if there's, you know, if there's something in there that you're not sure about.
Yeah, like what's adding?
Then I can reach out to a board member, or...
What's adding staff or using consultants?
So all you have to do, if you don't, you just reference back to the section, and then read that section.
Okay.
And for example, on that one, that's, again, related to affordable housing, and we have done that to some degree, so we're part of that regional housing contract through MAGIC, we're working with Metro West CD, who monitors our affordable housing units, so I would say that that's an effort that we are, we're working on, and it's ongoing, just as it's stated in the time frame, so.
Okay.
Brian Boyle, Hudson Road. I have a process question, so the current master plan sort of says that it was launched by the selectmen and the planning board, so I was just wondering, do you know whether the decision whether to update it is something that rests with you guys exclusively, or whether it's actually you and selectmen jointly?
I believe it's the planning board, I actually talked to Don Lowe about this before I brought it, I put it on the agenda, because I wanted to make sure I had his approval, however, I can, I'll double-check to see if order of selectmen is involved with, with that process.
He may ask me that it's under us, but to kind of form a...
A committee.
A committee, as the board selects me, so that may be where they get involved with this, right?
We actually have addressed a bunch of these things, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny, it's, yeah, right, exactly.
Do we, well, I mean, when I went through it today, I definitely, definitely was leaning towards, okay, I think we need to form a committee and start really looking at updating this, but we can certainly wait until September.
I mean, as long as it's in our purview, as you're saying, it'd be nice to take a look at it, kind of create a, I don't want to say a framework, but just key points that we think need to be addressed.
Yep, and there may be things in here that are no longer relevant that we, you know, we don't want to pursue anymore, you know?
Yeah. A lot of it still is pretty relevant, though.
Are conversations going on about wastewater? Where's that quiet?
Well, eventually, we're gonna do a study of the current system, to see if there's even any availability, availability, but...
What type of conversation you asking?
What type? Wastewater.
Sewer, sewer district.
Downtown one place.
Sewer district.
Yeah. There's definitely rumblings, I mean...
It was on this list.
There's some pre-existing non-conforming businesses around the town common that would highly benefit from
A municipal sewer.
Our municipal sewer, and there's many residents along there that would benefit as well, but, you know, the EDC was thinking, oh, well, maybe we could just use the system there, but it's kind of looking unlikely, and we're gonna...
How old's the system, Andy?
It's only like ten years old, this isn't at school.
School, yeah. Yeah, some, ten, twelve years old, some back then.
I mean, so we looked at the flows, and it was like fourteen to fifteen thousand gallons per day, per day, and it's a forty thousand gallon system, but what Mark, what Mark was saying, no, but that's actual flows, not Title V requirements, so, so Mark was actually interested in, I, I know the EDC was trying to push a study to happen, but I think Mark, you, you were on the committee, so, I mean, you have knowledge.
When it was built, yeah.
When it was built.
Yeah.
So, you know, he seemed to be stepping up more, so Don asked me, you know, things he wanted to drive that, and I said in the fall, and I said, I think Mark's even marched it than me, so.
I mean, I, I, my, my, without, without putting the answer in, in place, to start, I think, once you actually go back and review what the actual Title V flows are for the schools and, and public safety and the library, I think we're probably pretty close to capacity.
Oh, okay.
Or close enough that, and, and we need to think about, you know, at some, at some point, I mean, at some point, you know, do, will the schools be expanding, or will we need to be tight and come all into it, or something like that? And we want to be giving up that.
So, so the, so the EDC went before the Board of Selectmen, one meeting, to ask, to start to bring up a potential sewer study committee, to look at what Mark's talking about for the current system, but also to look, you know, what, what, what you would need, you know, what, what would be the zone, and then on top of that, there's all the whole political aspect of creating a sewer commission, you'd have to have a sewer commissioner, and, you know, the financials behind that, you know, in a dream world, having the current system we had, and just charging betterment fees and assessments, the town would have to get involved financially, but it's probably not the case, you know? So the whole number, the numbers would have to be done out.
Okay. Roger's gears. All right, so the plan is to go through this, this...
Master plan and this.
You sent us a link, right?
I sent you a link, and I can, yeah, I can send that to you electronically, I don't think you need it electronically, but I can do that if you want it.
I think the link's good enough.
Okay.
The schedule for June, July, and August?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm dates, so at the last meeting, we talked about meeting July twelfth, and then August ninth. Do those dates still work for the board?
I've got them in my calendar, yep.
Okay, so for July twelfth, the hearing for the preliminary subdivision plan for the Hudson Road project will be coming before the board, so that'll be important.
What was that?
The preliminary?
The Hudson Road subdivision.
So that's not the definitive, that's just the preliminary?
It's the first step, the preliminary, right. And then my other question is whether or not we're gonna, well, I think we actually need to have another meeting in June, because I did receive an A and R plan this week, and that's a twenty-one day deadline for Norsec, so I know at one point, we had talked about meeting June twenty-first, does that still work for the board?
I had that down, too.
So, are we meeting the fourteenth, or no?
No, well, we had talked about canceling the fourteenth, so I would like to cancel.
I just think we'll have to seven, fourteen, the toy version.
Totally.
That's what I'm going with. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll cancel the fourteenth, the twenty-eighth, and then we'll meet the twenty-first, if that works a little more.
Six, twenty-one, seven, twelve, eight, nine.
Perfect.
Awesome, all right.
And then the next one would be nine thirteen.
When do you think we'll see a definitive for, for Bush?
That's a good question, I don't know.
And what about a preliminary for?
I guess Brandon, I don't know.
What about a preliminary for Main Street?
Oh, I think that, I don't know, I don't know if they're on a time crunch, do you know?
Yeah, I'd be interested to hear what's...
I'm trying to get the signs that they're fully in that process.
We're about ten minutes early, but if you guys want to start, that would be super.
You ready?
Or if you're, are you waiting for somebody?
Um, we're on the nine o'clock for complete streets.
Yeah.
And updates, so are you going to introduce the complete streets?
Sure, doesn't matter. So, uh...
Are you waiting for others? I don't need to be too quick.
No, no. No, we're getting it. We're, we're meeting upstairs, so we just came down.
So, complete streets, I think I talked about this at the EDC, it's a climate program through Mass DOT, and essentially, it looks at transportation, providing safe access for people that are walking, people that are on bikes, people that are driving cars, and then public transit. So just recently, we signed Community Compact in two thousand and sixteen with the Pluto, Vico Pluto Administration, and as part of that compact, that agreement, we said that we'd work towards creating a complete streets policy. So that program, there's, it's a three-tiered program, the first tier is developing the policy, the second tier is creating a privateization plan, which potentially looks at various projects within your town that you would apply the complete streets to, and then the third is actually constructing it. So right now, we're obviously developing the policy, tier one.
It's a Commonwealth Grant type of a situation?
Well, that's kind of what I was just gonna say, so through the Community Compact, I applied for grant funding, we won it, so now we're working with MAPC to develop that policy. Just recently, I think it was two or three weeks ago, we had kickoff meeting for the complete streets with MAPC. Mary was at that meeting, where we talked about sort of just the scope of work, that scope of work is in your packet. So it's, there's a couple of things, it's developing the policy, but then it's also looking at doing a pilot program, possibly this fall, to actually implement some of the complete street features, give the residents an idea of what complete streets is, and how it would be implemented, because it is the policy that the town would have to adopt, so we want to make sure that the residents are on board with it, so. And I don't know if Mary wants to add anything to that.
So, um, yeah, so in looking at the project work plan that Chris and Dave gave us from MAPC, one of the first tasks was to study any reports that have been generated concerning traffic calming or whatever, and I do know that I had you forward them the Mobility Committee report, I was thinking, there are other reports, do they have those, will they?
That's a good question, I don't think that they do, particularly, I'm thinking of the one seventeen plan.
The one seventeen prioritization.
Yeah.
The Main Street Safety Task Force put out a Stella report, they're all on our, links on our page on the town website, so.
I, I can make sure that they get those.
But I think they should be given, you know, everything that has been generated by the town concerning these issues, safety issues.
Yep.
If I do that.
So does it deal with intersections, or is it just traveling and bikes?
It's both, it's both. Yeah, so as part of that scope of work, I didn't go, I didn't dive into too much detail, but one of the, the items is looking at intersections and how we would apply the complete streets, specifically, I think we're gonna be looking at the high school intersection, because that's been such an intersection of concern, so that will be part of that scope.
What about the Harvard, Harvard Road intersection?
It could be any intersections that we bring to their attention, I think, so if there's one in particular that the town feels that they need to be looking at.
I mean, that one definitely needs to go.
But it's not just intersections, I mean, it's the mindset that the public ways are for all users.
Right.
And it's not just for vehicles, it's for pedestrians, it's for cyclists, it's for mass transit, so that if you are making any changes, improvements to the public roadways, you have to take into consideration all users. That doesn't mean that you have to put sidewalks everywhere, and you have to put dedicated bike lanes, you have, but you do it where you can do it.
And, and there's, there's a combination of different ways to do it, and understanding that you want to promote all different types of it, but, you know, the complete streets program for, like, typical to do everything, is a very wide cross-section, you know, sidewalks on both sides, you know, bike lanes, all this type of stuff. Most towns can't do that, and nor do they necessarily want to do that, so there's multiple layouts that can be done to still attract different modes of transportation, but also combine it, you know, maybe it's a striped bike lane within the travel lane, you know, there's, there's multiple things that can be done, so, it's, but it's to look at it differently and to make sure that we're allowing not just vehicles to go through the town.
And MAPC did work with the town of Acton when they created their complete streets policy, and he gave you a copy of their policy, and I downloaded it, I also have Little Tims, and I have Mainers, and they're basically boilerplate documents, you know, the language is pretty much, they're the same.
The names have been changed.
But there's language in there that says, you know, that says, you know, you do it where feasible.
Yes.
You know, they, it, it doesn't mean every road has to have a sidewalk, every road has to have a dedicated bike lane, you do what you can within your, you know, if, if track, if, if the usage volumes aren't there, then you don't put it in.
Exactly.
I mean, we really need the traffic, you know, engineer, whoever, whoever that would be, to, to look at this and to, to recommend where it makes sense to do it within the town, and, and to come up with those ideas.
Something at Harvard Road, please.
Yeah, like, there may be.
Eleven years before, before, that's like such a death trap, that road.
I know, I feel like it's a ticking, yeah. It's a matter of...
I mean, cars get hit into the White House on the corner.
So I thought it was interesting, they, one of the things that MAPC will do is they will do sort of a trial mock-up of what complete streets would do for an area, and I found it interesting, they focused on the high school area, where I was thinking more the town center.
I think we can dictate to them where we want to do that, I actually think that came from a Board of Selectmen member that said, let's look at the high school, but if we feel that another area of town is better, then we could...
What did they say about the high school? Things consistent with what had been said before, or were there any new?
I think it's the pedestrian kids coming out of the school and not having to dodge cars at fifty miles an hour.
I think it's looking at traffic coming.
Okay.
But, I mean, you potentially could also have a ton of bikers towards the high school, I mean, you've not just got pedestrians, you could have bikers and, and cars, so, I mean, that one really kind of has.
And high speed.
So does it deal with, does it deal with, like, so it deals with traffic, then, you know, I, I always thought, and we've, we've talked about on the EDC is, because we've heard complaints about traffic with courses, could you mock up no left-hand turning onto water, water between four and six, is that like a mock-up that you could do?
It's an option, it's a, it's an option you could look at, I think there's multiple options that you want, like, you could look at.
Like you say, you know, for this month, or this week, you know, we're not turning left on this, on water, water.
What they did in Maynard is they did a mock-up, and they did it for what, about a week?
Mm-hmm.
And they had, not painted, but they used tape to do bike lanes, they did, downtown Maynard has great crosswalks anyway, so they didn't have to enhance those, but what they did was they did curb extensions at the crosswalks, bumpouts, we call them bumpouts, but they did mark those, and all it does is it just sort of gives pedestrians a, a little safer area before they enter the roadway. They also did parklets, which I kind of get a kick out of, in Boston Trottum, where you take a parking space, and you just sort of coordinate it off and put benches and tables, and so people can sit outside, I mean, again, and, and I don't think the parklets went over, and then they asked for feedback from the residents, and so that's what they would do here in an area that is decided upon.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm just trying to understand the extent that the complete streets goes, is it really try to deal with the issues of traffic and intersections, is it more just about bike lanes and safety?
The, the idea behind complete streets is looking at transportation as a whole, and figuring out.
So it's not really focusing on problem areas of the road?
No, no, it's taking it as a whole, and saying, as a, a transportation infrastructure, we want people to be able to walk, bike, and drive in a safe manner, in, in, in different modes, and, and looking at it as a whole, so it kind of does it all, doesn't say, okay, this intersection's a problem, let's look at it here, it's looking at it holistically.
Okay, I understand.
So for example, when DPW went out for a state grant to, for the lights at one-ten, and still, one-ten and one-seventeen, and we didn't get the grant, but because it was going to be a Mass DOT project, and Mass DOT has adopted complete streets, it would have to have been done as a complete streets project, so part of what would have been done in, in the work on that intersection would have been a sidewalk would have been installed on the...
At least on one side.
North side, yeah, north side going partially up across the bolt marches.
And it would have been a sidewalk to nowhere, but the... And it would have been a sidewalk to nowhere, but the, yeah. It was too big. Okay, we started, now you just continue on.
Yeah. Well, I mean, so as part of our, you know, special apartments and different subdivisions, we've definitely been trying to, like for the Forbush Mill Road subdivision, we talked to them about adding a sidewalk. Granted, you know, it's a dead end somewhere, but yeah, starting to build pieces as you go.
All of the else made it clear that that's not necessarily E D A compliant, because it's on their property.
No, and that's why, and I think that was a comment. We, although you have to understand, if you're doing a sidewalk next to a road, you're allowed to go with the grade of the road. So you don't have to, you know, have it be, you know, a different elevation. But I think the thought was they, we didn't want them to be tied to having to meet certain things, so they did it on their property, so it didn't have to be.
We preferred meandering anyway, right?
I think it's, it's just something different, and that's what people.
So other than that, it's the $400,000.
So the $400,000, is that something we have to match, or we just can use it as long as it fits the criteria?
Once we, the policy is adopted, we're eligible for that money.
Once we have our prioritization plan completed. I mean, obviously, these projects, it's expensive to do this. Let's, I mean, there's no way around it. So that $400,000 is just gonna be a portion of what it's really gonna cost to do this. So I think it's important to realize that complete streets, we're, we're gonna apply it where we think it needs to be applied, obviously in consultation with the traffic engineer, but it's not something that we're gonna apply on all roads. It's, you know, we'll look at it, we'll look at it. Really, we're looking at it for 117 and then beyond that, in terms of like a regional approach too, in terms of bike paths and that kind of thing, connecting roadways for biking that.
I think it makes most sense in the town center, especially with the common, you know, and the sidewalks and being able to take a bike from the common, cross the streets somewhere to Memorial Park, you know.
You do need to realize though, if we have a complete breach policy, it's all roads. It's all roads. It's not just, we can't say we're only gonna do complete streets on Route 117.
It doesn't really make sense.
It would have to be on all, all roads. But, you know, in the boilerplate, they do have, you know, a clause that basically says, and bear with me. Where cost or impacts of accommodation excesses is excessively disproportionate to the need or probable future use, you don't have to put it in. This language that is in it that says that even though complete streets is for all the roadways, it means if you're resurfacing Harvard Road, you don't necessarily have to put in sidewalks on it at the same time. However, if you do have sidewalks on a roadway and you're resurfacing the roadway and the sidewalks need to be repaired, then you are responsible to bring the sidewalks.
Into compliance with this type of plan, yes.
Well, do we, I mean, so if we're in this program, do we open ourselves up to a resident on some back road saying, oh, well, this back road should meet, you know, we can't rock on the road because we don't have any play, we don't open ourselves up to not being?
I mean, you think this is also supposed to be geared towards places where you're improving it? I mean, it's not gonna touch existing. I mean, if you're not, not doing anything, it's not, but where roads need to be improved or anything like that, that's where it kind of triggers it and says.
So there will be, you know, some costs associated. I don't see it as being, you know, a burden. And, you know, most of our sidewalks are, you know, on 117.
So when you resurface 117, are you required to fix the sidewalks?
Yes. And actually, you know, our.
So that could cost the town.
Our sidewalks are non-compliant right now. It's a major liability.
But I guess what I'm asking, which, you know, I would love for the sidewalks to be fixed, but if it's not in our budget and we want to, can we not repave 117 without redoing the sidewalks? I mean, do we catch ourselves in a bind there?
You can, you can repair.
Yeah.
But you couldn't, you know, I think if you're making a major change to 117, they wouldn't want.
No, if you're resurfacing, then you have to fix the sidewalks along with the roadway.
But what if?
So small repairs are.
What if we didn't want to do that, though? We're kind of stuck in that, if we're part of it?
I would guess.
I would think if.
I'm not saying I wouldn't want to fix.
If we're resurfacing 117, it's usually.
Not bad board.
Well, we're get, you know, it's, it's a, we're not.
The last time they did something, that was before I started working here, I think it was the hot-in-place asphalt recycling, and that doesn't necessarily help as a major. I don't, you know, I don't think you'd have to change the sidewalks to do that with complete streets, so. I thought if you touched the sidewalk, if you went to do something.
And I wasn't sure, I thought Harold was sitting past that, that you can do a hot-in-place once, then you have to grind it and do a conventional, and then you can do it hot-in-place again.
Right.
So the next time around, maybe grinding it and.
I mean.
We, with chapter, chapter 40 money, I think it is?
Chapter nine.
Chapter, okay. Chapter something. Some chapter money.
Yes.
But I'm not sure that we have enough from that to, you know, if we have to redo sidewalks along at the same time, I think that would be.
I mean, typically, triggers are, and I will admit, I'm not sure on what it is, but typically, if you're milling overlay, you're not usually triggering thresholds. So you would be able to mill an overlay, a street, and just do it what it is. As soon as you get into reclamation or full-depth repaving.
You get it.
Now, now, now you're into, all right, you're getting down into the stuff, you're potentially getting into infrastructure, now you have the ability to really fix some of the stuff. If you're just milling and overlaying, you're not impacting stuff. So my guess is if you needed to mill an overlay and just repave 117, it's not gonna trip you into having to do more improvements. Once you start ripping up that pavement, maybe potentially even more, then it's gonna trip, trip you into doing it.
Hi. Sorry if you already covered this, but what's the process for who approves the policy and who has to review it before it's finalized?
I believe it's for a selectman that has to adopt the policy or approve the policy, and then Mass D, well, Mass D O T essentially has to, has to approve it, and they score it out of 100 points.
So if it's, if it's a policy that forces the town to change budget, because it doesn't go to town meeting, it's just a selectman?
It can. You can do it that way, too. Do it either way. I asked that question, actually.
Well, I mean, you can, so you could just have.
It can be like a by, it could be like a general bylaw.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you can do it that way, too.
I just didn't know if, because it affects budgeting if it had to go before town meeting.
It doesn't have to. And I'm still questioning whether or not it applies to all streets. I know that's what M A P C said, what they told us, but in looking at the frequently asked questions under the, under the program, it says, can our complete streets policy only apply to certain areas of town, such as an economic development zone or business district? And they say, yes, a municipality can tailor the policy to fit its needs. However, depending on how small or large the focus area is with respect to the entire municipality, it can impact the policy score. So you need to get an 80 or better score to be approved by Mass D O T. So I think that's the one thing that we just need to make sure that if we tailor it to certain roads, certain areas of town, that we know we're doing enough to get that 80, 80 points.
Yeah, I mean.
I think the, what's been part of Mary's great is kind of the overall out for a lot of our back roads.
Yeah, true.
So we can say it's the whole town, but then 90% of the town falls under the, the less, less used or not economically viable to, to bring up to code.
And didn't the representative from M A P C say something about like if we were working on the Forbush Mill area, going into Green Road or, you know, so that would count to as not just 117, but little offshoots, places where people.
Exactly.
Heavy bike.
Yep. Yeah, 'cause we talked about, also part of complete streets is looking at amenities, place, you know, destinations where people want to go, where are people gonna be walking to? If there's a ball field that's on an offshoot road, let's make sure that we extend the complete streets to that ball field.
Yeah, so it's like to come into Memorial Park.
Exactly.
You know? It makes sense at the time, it makes sense from Harvard Road to, you know, maybe to 495, but, you know, that section.
Well, you're looking at a lot of the roads. I mean, you've got the town pond, town beach, all of the conservation land.
Yeah.
So.
I guess with the soccer.
The vineyard.
Yeah, but, I mean, where pedestrians, pedestrians are in the center of town, I mean, there's some bike, there's bikers, I guess, on 85, but.
I live on Corn Road, they're all over Corn Road and Chippewa.
They're all over Green and Harvard for sure.
I mean, not that I'm saying to make any sidewalks there. I'm just saying that I know when the mobility, when we did the survey for the mobility report, and we asked, people want to connect to destinations, whether in a car, bike, or on foot. And constant, I mean, they listed, you know, the priority for the destinations, and they're all over the town.
I think this somewhat complements our discussion we had earlier with regard to wanting to diversify the housing we have in the town and the businesses and stuff, and this is looking at transportation. I think it all can, you know, intermingles in the.
I think it's good, and I, I know on the E C and here, we've talked about, you know, walkways and so good, I just, you know, just make sure that we don't get ourselves in a bind where we're tied into something that we don't want to do, you know?
I agree with that. That's why I want to make sure that we're honing in on the places where we truly want to do this.
Yeah. On a side note, what I said earlier about the no left, how would we go about doing?
This came up before.
We talked about, so no left turn at Water Quatic?
Yeah. How would you do that?
So force people to take Manor?
Yeah, or Manor.
Or Wilder?
Yeah, or Wilder.
So is that a big issue, that people are taking left turns at Water Quatic?
It's a huge issue.
Oh, no, you mean taking a left, oh, on, from Main Street onto?
Yeah, Main Street onto Water Quatic.
It backs up.
If, if you talk to places.
During, during rush hour.
During rush hour. If you talk to businesses like, we talked to Paragon, their employees, they've actually lost employees at Paragon, because when they're trying to leave at five to go pick up, they can't leave. They just, they're stuck from Paragon to 495 for a half an hour. You know, if they have a kid's little league game or gotta go pick a kid up from daycare, and they have set hours, they can't leave at three, they have, they have.
Wouldn't that just push it to Manor Road then?
Well, I mean, arguably, you could say, I mean, I guess you could say, thinking long-term, that you could potentially have a left-hand turning lane in that area more than you could at Water Quatic, because there'd be like land taking at Water Quatic. I think maybe there's a little bit more leeway further down.
At Manor Road?
So why does Water Quatic factor into their inability to get from Paragon to the 495?
Because it backs all the way up.
That's where it backs.
Because if you're trying to turn left.
So you're saying the backup is from Water Quatic to Paragon?
Yes.
That's why it cuts through on sugar.
Ask anybody on that side of town if they want to get, you know, to somewhere at five o'clock, you know, you're on the road for 45 minutes.
It's a standover, sugar.
I mean, because it's only, if you had a left-hand turning lane there.
You're saying you've got lights.
But there's no light there.
You have lights at 495.
It doesn't matter, you could, you could set those lights, green, red, green, red, and you're not going anywhere. I mean, if you had a left-hand turning lane there, the through traffic, you know, could go.
Stops it up, right.
Right, so that's where the traffic breaks.
Right.
After that, yeah, it's finished.
You would need to get an engineer to do a traffic study, you just can't go and start.
No, I'm just wondering what the process is.
He just said to do a trial.
If you did, you know.
I don't know what you need to do.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the process at all.
I think you'd want to do exactly that, you'd want to do a traffic study and figure out where, do all the turning movements, and then have someone recommend.
Because the, I think the ultimate solution is a left-hand turning lane, which seems very tough, because you'd be taking people's land on either side.
It's a rotary.
Huh?
That's how you're rotating, man.
No, no, this is my ultimate plan. This is, this is what, this is my, you know, I'm now a traffic designer. You can't turn left onto Water Quatic, and there's a rotary at the Harvard intersection. But so, so if you want, if you want to go, if you want to go, so you, you drive to that intersection, Harvard, if you come in on, if you're coming from Harvard Road, you just, you know, it's much, you know, you have a good, nice, big rotary there, and so the Manor Road, Harvard Road, you take care of that intersection, and if you want to go left at Water Quatic, you just go down to Rotary, and then you go down Manor.
But what about the winery and traffic? People going down Manor, which is a narrow road, and people would be cutting if they went to that Rotary to go through Manor? You have other problems. I'm just saying, you're creating other.
Yeah, Manor's not good. You're, you're.
I'm sorry.
I'm not a civil engineer. I'm just trying to come up with a solution to a problem. Because it really is, it really is impactful. And Cobham, which is across the street from Paragon, will be going for sale, and, you know, realtors, you know, it's gonna be hard to sell, because people want to leave at five and they just can't.
Well, I mean, this is where.
You're so close to 495, but you can't get to it.
Well, I think this is where it all comes, I mean, we say for, you know, development along 117, where it triggers a certain amount, you need a traffic study done. And, I mean, unfortunately, it may just be for that component, but, I mean, if we really want to look at it, we should look at the corridor.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is that intersection, clearly.
But, no, I think it's multiple. And I think that's, you know.
I think it's just sheer volume.
Well, it's getting more and more. I mean, traffic everywhere, I mean, it's.
And, you know, I was gonna say, companies start, need to do a little more creative approaches, too, if they can stagger, you know, start times.
Well, we, we asked them about, we asked the CEO about that, of the company.
Certain employees.
Can your employees work seven to three instead of nine to five, you know?
Yeah.
Did you say, Mary, that Route 2, the work was done up there?
Pretty much done, yeah.
The worst traffic singularly.
Is there much less traffic coming through 117 because of Route 2?
It's Water Quatic.
It's hard to say. I'm the one who said that.
Yeah, okay, that's.
So I'm on Main, and I can see out my window where the traffic stopped in the morning heading, so I'm by the high school, so I can see when it's backed up into town, and it used to be much worse. And it now, it's not near, although they've been doing the tree work, so that's.
Yeah. We received a lot of emails and many. The D P W are nothing to do with that, just saying that's national grid.
Oh, is that, is that, okay.
When I'm going east at the time, I mean, you could see it, if there's one car waiting to turn left, I mean, they could stop, they could be stuck there for a minute, just backing traffic up all the way down the road.
No, I agree that maybe a turning lane would work at Water Quatic, but again, you need to do an engineering study. You can't just throw it in there.
So, so, you know, how do we go about that? So we have to get, what, town, town meeting to approve money for an engineering study, or we have money for that? Do you guys have money for that in a budget somewhere?
We have a plan. We have a plan from D O T. Water Quatic, yeah.
And that's what they called for?
They actually had, it had a turn lane there. I mean, it really is, it's amazing. It squeezed in, but it, they did have.
So without widening?
Without taking any land, yeah.
Okay.
Going, going out to the maximum.
Right away.
Right away, yeah.
I, I know that the 117 prioritization group was, they were really focused on traffic calming and everything, and a straight through and a turn left isn't necessarily traffic calming, but it's a huge problem in town, you know, for residents and for businesses. And taking, I think that really needs to be addressed, that intersection.
There are a lot of things you can do. I mean, I wouldn't hyper-focus on just that intersection. I mean, I wouldn't hyper-focus on just that intersection. And everything is related, so what you do to that intersection will have, and also have a ton of other intersections. It's not a simple solution, but there are, one of the things that we are moving towards is, um, last summer, the House passed a municipal modernization bill. It's a big bill, and there are two sections in it that calls for giving municipalities the ability to lower speed limits. In one case, if you create a designated safety zone, you, you can lower the speed limit to, I believe, 25. And the other is in thickly settled areas.
I mean, that's, that's quite a good, but the, the speed, the speed between 4:00 and 6:00 is zero. I mean, you're not moving, you have to get cars moving.
Well, but that's between 4:00 and 6:00. The other section is in thickly settled areas. You can lower the speed limit from 30 miles an hour down to 25 is something that we're going to push for in the town center because that is our thickly settled area.
I think that is good for off-times, and I think it would be good for Forbush, but dealing with the rush out traffic.
Well, we did, we did try with Forbush for the, creating a designated safety area. And Mast DOTD said that it, it's not possible because you have a 45 mile an hour speed limit. And it's, you really can't have people go from 45 to 25.
Even if it's a school zone?
We saw that as a possible solution to be able to get a crosswalk in.
Why can't it be a school zone? I forgot there was, there was a reason.
It's not an elementary school, you know, it's a high school, and it's-
But I think we should be able to lower the speed limit.
What if it was like a junior high school there, a 7th, 3rd, then would it be a school zone?
I think so, yeah.
We'd care a little bit more about those kids.
Care a little bit more.
They should know how to get it.
Thanks for your, for helping me with that.
So another thing is that, you know, that timeframe, you know, middle school has lots of after-school activities, and getting out of Mechanic Street is a nightmare.
Yeah, possible, yeah.
And that's a huge number of cars, like individual cars going to pick up one kid at, you know, from 4:00 to, say, 8:00 even, depending on what activity they're in. But there's a lot at 5:00 for sports. And so that adds to that backup. I mean, it's not all the left-hand turn lane, especially now where, you know, I drive that all the time because I have to go where I live, and people pass on the right. I mean, there is essentially a left turn turn lane right now.
If people-
If people, yeah, it's not, it's not marked, but, yeah, I mean, I pass on the-
Most of the time, people move over. I mean, that's the way it's become, but I feel like-
Could you put a suggestive sign in if you turn left?
Stay left, yeah.
Not legally.
Crap with the wide lanes.
We could make a turn lane, just not.
That's great.
But I do think it's, you have to look at Mechanic and Water Aquatic.
I think it's a target that's a core study you really need to do.
Like, I'm, I'm really fearful that they'll come in and pop a light at Mechanic, or at Water Aquatic, and those middle, I don't know how they'd ever get out.
Right.
If you live-
Well, a light's only good if you have two lanes. I mean, if it's just one lane, then I don't see it improving anything.
Right, it won't, yeah, so it's like they'll never get out. And trying to get out of Mechanic at 5:00 o'clock is scary.
I have to, I have to take a left out of there between 5:00 and 6:00, and that's where it's awful.
Well, it starts at 3:00, but it's the worst at that right hour, because nobody wants to let you in, yeah.
What is this, so the police detail's only in the morning?
It's, and it's not every morning.
No, no.
The police cannot commit to being at the schools on every day.
And really, they let the buses out, and they go.
Oh, okay.
You know, and at that time of day, at 3:00, it takes a little time to get through, it's not the end of the world. It's really later, those after-school, like, if you're picking your kid up after school at 3:00 o'clock, it's, yeah, you got to wait, because there's 50 cars trying to get out.
I know, I know, my wife needs to go left there, sometimes she just goes right before the way around.
Yeah, right, yeah. Between 5:00 and 6:00, you have all the sports, as my kids go to extended day, and it hits till 5:45, so you have a ton of people picking up between 5:00 and 6:00, and then you've got rush hour.
And there's something, there's drama, there's math, there's all the sports, there's art, there's tons of activities that people don't really think about, and it's almost all single-parent pickups.
I, I guess just, and finally, it really affects the livability and the workability of the town, so it really needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
It's a big, I agree, it's a big address.
Thank you, guys.
So, well, there is, um, I guess we, the other items that we wanted to mention that we're working on are the installation of stop signs where there were the yield signs. So those are in, will be in progress during the month of June. And they've been out in the paper and on different sites, and all for different reasons. But mostly, I think prompted by the thoughts from our police and the impact of the yield signs and an improvement by putting in the stop signs.
You guys did the one at Jordan and Randall, right? Something changed there.
Yeah.
I think that's a stop now, when it was a yield, or it's a yield when it was nothing?
No, Jordan is one of the, it's a yield now. It's going to be, but it has been, it will be changed to stop, it's one of our listings.
It's going to happen, it hasn't changed.
Oh, I thought it did, I thought it looked different.
That's a tough intersection.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a bad sightlines, pretty bad sightlines.
Are you planning on doing more of those? It seems like there were a number on the list.
There was, um-
I like, I still like, Water Aquatic, it was Berlin, wasn't it?
There's seven that are being changed.
Yeah.
There were about 11 that we were looking at.
But there were 11 that we were looking at, and from time to time, people will bring it to our attention that there's a place that they feel should be looked at.
Like Water Aquatic and Berlin, I can't believe that that's the yield sign there, coming off of Berlin.
That's an open intersection, I mean, you've got good sightlines.
You do not have good sightlines when you're, when you're making it right onto Water Aquatic.
Okay. We based our judgment on accident data, sightlines, and those were, and then in talking with the police. If there was no accident data, then it would, it was hard convinced to change from yield to the stop sign.
And in that particular place?
Just go have a couple accidents, then.
Yeah.
Be more aggressive.
And, you know, studies have proven, the more signs, the people, the less likely people are going to observe them. So by thinking that replacing, putting stop signs everywhere actually are probably creating more of a problem because you'll have more people who will be running through.
Yeah, I actually, there was a, when I used to live in Marlboro, there was a road that they had, and it was a straightaway road, but they had multiple, uh, drive, or roads coming into it, but they had a stop sign for, for the straightaway at every single road, and it was awful. And finally, about a year or so ago, they, they took them all out.
And, and people will slow down just naturally, just, but-
The Cosway Street? The cut through between Route 20 and the mall?
Yes, it's big, although, I think it's big, although, it's a big old street.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, because anytime I'd be over, and I used to go to the mall, it was just awful. I mean, now it's a perfect example of where it just didn't make sense, it didn't work, but, um-
It just didn't, I didn't think to stop. I've blown through that before.
See?
So we have one more city improvement that Holly's done a lot of work on, and we hopeful, we, we would like to see it happening within the next year or two.
So what it is, is a crosswalk signs that flash when someone presses the button. And we'd like to put one in at the end of Mechanic Street across, so that people can cross Main Street there. And so one of our issues were, you know, we wanted it to be a solar powered, so we didn't have to bring in power. So we were worried about, will it work? Because there's tree coverage there. So we contacted a company and talked to them about it, Tapco. They put in, if you've seen them, in the West Aston Center that they've done over, they have some really nice ones. So it presses the button, it flashes, and gives you time to cross, and that's it. It's not like, it's on demand.
Yeah.
And, um, so-
Kimball's in West-
Kimball's, I was just going to say, because I work right up there, and they have them.
They have one somewhere.
And actually, I appreciate that, because I drive by there every single day, and it gives me a visual to see when there's a pedestrian that may not-
You can't miss it.
So it doesn't flash all the time, it's only if someone presses it.
But it's nice as a driver to see that, to be like, okay.
Yeah, and so we thought, you know, it's really difficult, like, if you've ever gone to the Hilton Building or the meeting, and you've parked over at the school, it's really hard to get across, especially at night. Or there were people at Town Hall talking about trying to go to Bolton Bean and not being able to cross, so, so we did call them and ask them about, well, how do we know if there's enough sun? And they said their engineers would look at it, we tell them where it is, and if they can't determine it, they would send us a kit. So their engineers looked at it, and they called me a few days later, and they said it should be fine if we wanted to put one in at that intersection, or at the end of Mechanic. And, um, so their particular lights, they have, it would be both sides of the street, there would be a sign on both side, both sides of each pole, and it would flash on both sides. And it would have a battery power pack, so it could go with 25 days without sun. So, and we, if we were worried that, for whatever reason, we could do bigger if we wanted. And so their price, assuming we get no discounts, no anything, there's no government contracts for the two poles with all the signage and et cetera, et cetera, is $8,500, and that includes the shipping. So he was giving me the worst-case scenario for us. So that's something we'd like to pursue.
So that's plus installation?
Yeah, we install, or?
Well- We would install, yeah.
So, one problem.
Yeah.
One problem is-
Only one?
Yeah.
Well, and actually, the two problem is that it's across, it's for the crosswalks, which do not have curb ramps.
So it may, so the question is, are we forced to put in a curb ramp? And if we're forced to put in a curb ramp, does it snowball in, you know?
This is ADA?
This is ADA, yeah. Yeah, this is great, bringing, yeah, this goes back to the earlier discussion about-
Exactly.
If you touch one thing, you have to bring it up to, are there, is there a crosswalk sign or anything there?
Up to this, I want.
Is there, is there a cross signs or anything there?
There's a crosswalk.
There's a crosswalk.
So it's a crosswalk, but I, there, there's no sign or anything?
What's the speed limit there?
30.
30.
Well, this is like, we would like to bring it down to 25 with this new law, but we need to look at that, what we need to do.
So there's, there's a crosswalk, but no sidewalks or curb cuts that it goes to, basically?
It goes to a sidewalk, but there's no curb cut.
I think in front of that blue house, it's not a step down, I don't remember.
I think it is.
Is this a step down?
Or, I think it may be a slum, but it's, yeah, it's a, but it's definitely not, it's not a ramp in any way, yeah.
So that's, so, you know, this is where we run into these issues.
So who, who can make the decision of whether, if we were to get this, whether it would trigger having to bring those up to compliance?
Well, I think we could put them in and just cross our fingers that Mast DOT, or, you know, nobody notices that.
It's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission, but it would seem-
Well, I guess, I guess the other question is, on, on improvements like the ramps, is there a timeframe, like, so if we put the signs in, you know, next town meeting, we approve the money, they go in next summer? So is there some, is there some periods, is there, you know, is there, is there, do we have, would we have to have ramps in when the lights go in, or within a year, or within 10 years, or?
We're having a water-.
I can't answer that, I mean, but we-
I, I didn't know in complete streets whether there's, you know?
Typically, the way ADA works is as soon as you touch it, you've got to do it. They don't give a timeframe.
Okay.
But-
So kind of say, it's all one thing, yeah.
I don't know if this would consider touching it. This is a little different, because we're not touching the curb cuts, we're not touching any of the pavement layouts. We're adding in a visual sensor, if you want to call it that, for pedestrian crossing. So I don't know.
So this is something that we're going to next, we'll be talking with Don about it. And, and usually, he talks to Mast DOT, so we'll probably say, yes.
I don't think, I don't think, why would Mast DOT force you to, I mean, it's more of an ADA, M-A-D-A point. Isn't it? I mean, I don't think Mast DOT would have, would have a say. Would they?
Well, I don't know, it's usually, when we spoke with him initially, he said he would talk to, have to talk to town council and Mast DOT. Because I think maybe that's their, his go-to for, you know, questions on roadworks. But you're right, ADA, you would, you know, you'd have to be contacted.
Well, I don't know if they would have to be, well, just go through the whistle.
Well, it's funny, I think about now, like, we're putting in the police signs, are those going out of sidewalk anywhere? I mean, are they touching the side, or like, how's that?
I don't know if any of them are going in the town center.
No, the, oh, no.
The four signs.
No.
So that's pretty much where, what we did to, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'd like to point them out. I think I stepped to the agenda.
Okay, I'll move to your turn. Second, who has some favors today, right? Who's Erica? This is staff.
Yeah, I can do it.
I'm going to ask you.